Hey everybody, we're live and apologize this is supposed to go on. A lot earlier and days earlier in fact. This space was originally made oh something like two weeks ago. Because Pastor Robinson. Had originally told me. That he was going to announce that he was going to run for Oakland City Council District six. On Wednesday and I believe he wanted. The current. Person who's holding that seat. Kevin Jenkins to he hear and know that he had a challenger now in reality. If you go to. The District six. Application, there's only one person whose name comes up and that's. The current council member. Of District six who was the inner mayor Kevin Jenkins. Who you know by and large has done a good job. Uh did especially great job as interim mayor. So but the pastor. Apparently thought that he has a. Uh more veered to the ground and could better serve. The members residents of District six District six. Has had almost a revolving door of representatives. For. Sometime in. Years past. Uh you had. Great representatives like Nate Miley. Who was Alameda County Supervisor now. Uh but he was District six Supervisor. And. Most most recently you had. Lauren Taylor. And Lauren, as you know, ran for mayor and lost to Oakland Mayor Shang Tao. And then ran for mayor again. And lost to the eventual Oakland mayor now and that's Barbara Lee former Congresswoman. And prior to that. Desley Brooks was the. Multi-term Oakland City Council Member who did a great job but then lost to Lauren Taylor. Um. In in uh in what for her was an unfortunate outcome. But um rather than put up. More of a challenge next go she just sort of bowed out which is too bad because I think Oakland lost a. Fantastic representative. Be that as it may, it's what she would happen. So now uh. Pastor Jenkins uh excuse me Pastor Jenkins. Pastor Robinson uh had the belief that hey he could challenge him but. Someone else came along and said very recently, hey, you know, and I'm not going to mention the name. You shouldn't do that or don't do it because I've got a job for your commit committee assignment um. It's not a good idea to be in that position and. You know if you follow Oakland that. The reason why. Oakland Mayor Shang Tao is. With the tag recalled Oakland Mayor Shang Tao is because among other things. Her and her partner specifically her partner Andre Jones was alleged to have. Uh sold. Positions on boards and commissions. Uh quid pro quo and exchange. Do this for that. That's not something you're supposed to do and. A pastor. Has enough following he is the pastor. Where he doesn't need to get mixed up in that. And uh. I tried to tell him that. And others who watching this who will see will also tell him that once they see this. That hey, there's another avenue and the person that's offering it. Um. Again, I'll say this as should not should not simply be doing this, okay? Um should not simply be doing this at all. But the fact that this is happening is representative of kind of a leadership void in Oakland that exists and be in. To begin with that. Is come to define where we are uh as a city, I mean think look look. Since two thousand four. We had. Three major sports teams to now. In terms of Google Trends. Look, look. Oaklands went down by fifty percent. Fifty percent and so in other words started at seventy five. In two thousand four and now it's a half fat. And it's directly tied to departure of the A's excuse me I could be Warriors then the Raiders and. Especially with the war way the Raiders first then the Warriors Warriors really went down. And the A's are not complete but once the ballpark in Las Vegas is. Done uh. Las Vegas Athletics will be active and Las Vegas will get the. Search intensity that Oakland once enjoyed simply because the athletics name. Includes the city Las Vegas and not Oakland. Uh through that unlike in the twentieth century. Leaders have done absolutely nothing to try to replace any of those organizations and those organizations serve to market. The city. But what's going on underneath all of that is a city where you have a lot of people. Jockeying for position to try to get. What little power they can and earn little money they can in a way. That I've never seen before and is quite disturbing. And this is one. Episode, one example of it. The city. Residents are not served by this process. People in office. Should be working on initiatives. To generate jobs and investments for the area Oakland has. And arguably a negative investment rating in other words businesses are leaving or dying people are leaving. Or they're the victim of crimes and. It masks or really serves to cover up a lot of the more beautiful aspects of Oakland like Lake Barrett. And the Jack London waterfront and the parks and the Oakland Hills. All of that. But what's happening right now. Is is a is a tragic is tragic and at some point it has to stop. I don't believe this is going to make it stop. But I do think it's important to talk about. Exactly what's going on and why we're allowing it to go on. It also comes in the backdrop. Of a situation we have, you know unpredictability at the top but. In a way where the President of the United States would have. A great reason to try to take over Oakland. That's right. The president is already threatened to take over New York and already. Made a mention of the possibility of. Taking over Washington respect to the matter of the National Football League. These are unprecedented threats. A President of the United States who believes is doing it in Los Angeles respective immigration that. They are fully empowered, they are almost a king. And can direct resources wherever he wants and. He has a Supreme Court that is arguably paved the way for. Him as president or anybody else who happens to beat him in the election um that's coming up. Or take figure out figures out some kind of way to wrestle the reins of power. Um in a legal way, of course, from the current President of the United States. Um but right now we're. In the situation of President Trump. Has undisputed power. He is wielding it but he's also wielding it in a way that's unpredictable. And designed to get you to talk about him say, oh, my goodness, what is he going to do next? And uh that's that should be. The concern of every Oaklander, every Oaklander should be saying, hey, you know what? We better right our ship because. We don't want that to happen, we don't, we don't, we've been under government control with our police. Organization for decades and it seems like. We're never getting out of it. Imagine if that were the case for the entire city. Alright, imagine if that were the case. It's it's not something that. Anyone is going to want to have happen. And yeah, we're not yet, we're not talking about it and we're taking the actions that would lead to it. We already have a problem that. With our finances such that there are some who believe that we are are headed toward bankruptcy. Um. Do we have a plan to avoid that that includes sound economic development right now? My argument is no, we don't. What businesses are we going after to bring to Oakland that will increase Oakland's revenue? I'm I'm game to know what they are, do you know? I haven't seen a plan at all. Uh at all, I haven't seen any. Any any plan, okay? And so and what and we think about what's going on around. The Bay Area on top of that. I'm just looking at something that would seem to have nothing to do. With Oakland but has everything to do with it Kelly Whalen, who is the director uh and senior video producer. Um. Me media education wrote on LinkedIn just about uh yeah a day ago. The Bay Area got a little less bright with KQED's decision to eliminate. So many content producing jobs, including nearly the entire digital video team. That has been creating highly engaging and award-winning videos for years. So much institutional, cultural and regional wisdom and memory will be lost. With these cuts in addition to the devastating impact on these individuals, many of whom are friends and former colleagues and. KTU D is cutting fifteen percent of its staff which affects seventy seventy positions. And all of that affects the news that's reported, it affects how we see. Our government and what's possible, it affects what we know uh or more pointedly what we don't know. And. It it impacts the leadership that we have or don't have because we. Are not aware, we're not, we don't, we don't know as much about what's going on so. All of these developments. Are alarm bells for Oakland but. We cannot have people who want to run for office. Guided by people in office who think that they can direct what that person does. Everybody shouldn't believe that they have a right to run for office to achieve office that. A promise of a job that's not there is the kind of thing that. Um is going to get them notice, oh, no, no, this person is going to get me this commissioned committee assignment. Oh, no, no, this person is going to do this. I can tell you that there have been elected officials who've done that in the past. For other elected officials say, hey, look, don't don't. In that this happened in the Super Bowl. One elected official I won't name told the other do not vote for the Super Bowl Oakland plan. And if you don't, I will give you a committee assignment, well, that person didn't do it and guess what? They didn't get the assignment either. Anyway, alright, so basically effectively they were lying to. And meanwhile Oakland. Had one more weakness to show the NFL. The specific weakness was that the contract that I presented. That the Coliseum Drive Powers Authority was expected to approve that allowed the NFL to use the Coliseum Authority grounds. For the Super Bowl was was left unsigned because the vote was. A um. An abstention. A vote of no vote. That's how it was allowed to go down, no tie break. A vote of no vote. And I remember the press on particular lower counts of the Oakland Tribune asked me at the time, well. They said no because there's no vote, so what are you going to do? I said, well, in the words of Captain Kirk. They said, no, therefore we're going to Atlanta to give our presentation National Football League anyway. And we did and Jerry Brown uh gave one of the best speeches I've ever heard elected official give in my life. We could have got it on that basis alone, but the fact of the matter is that we didn't go in buttoned up. Because of the same kind of politics in Oakland practice then that exists today, only worse today. It can wind the person or it can wind up with the person that's doing it, the elected official. Gaining the gaze of the FBI. Remember Andre Jones is. Under the gaze of the FBI because he is it is said alleged that he was. Selling selling jobs out of the mayor's office. Um he was doing that, alright and. That's not something that you should be doing, hold on one moment, please, let me get this because this is actually relevant to what I'm saying, hold on. I'm on talking about this situation. Yeah, but I'm I'm I mean I'm talking about that, but I'm not, you know, naming that other name. But I am talking about if you want to come on and you know then clear it up. But I'm simply saying this is not the kind of way, this is not the way a city should be should be. It shouldn't and I don't want Oakland to turn in this direction, it's got to stop. And so what little way I'm doing to make it stop is what I'm doing if you want to come on and say, hey, look. You know, here's my take on on it um and and without getting too deep. Please do, you have the have the invite to to come on. But uh this. This this is held, I've held this for two weeks now. Okay, and I've made it because you asked me to make it. And it's you know and I and it's wrong for me to have these stacks of of studios open. For a person and then they don't come and leave me hanging. You know that that's if you ask me to do something, I do it, right? Oh, come on, I'm I'm on already. Say so all you have to do is all you have to do is get your uh you know invite and come on in, I'm I'm already on, I'm on the air. I'm on the air. So he's coming on, you know, we have to have a better city, folks. You know, we we've got to stop this stuff. This secret be I've got a deal going behind here and I've got this going, these are all new people. You know, you know, these are new elected officials and newly appointed staff. So I'm I'm calling putting a timeout on this stuff. We have serious problems we need to deal with with. Big ticket approaches tax increment financing that covers. Two hundred, three hundred, a thousand acres of land. That we can then marshal that money and direct it to use. To match it with business investment. So that we get an organization like man, let's say Rocket Mortgage to. Build a a West Coast Annex. That is. At the Oakland Airport Business Park grounds as an idea, I'm just throwing this off the top of my head. But this is the kind of thing that we need, alright, this is the kind of thing that we need. We can't go about planning for that. When people are only focused on. These these base hit. Personal objectives that do not move the needle for the city as a whole. And they don't, we need people competing for office, we don't need people held back to protect somebody else. Who may not be the best choice. We have a democracy and a competition. Let's have that democracy and competition happen, okay? And so like I'm waiting now, but this time I'm I'm talking. Whereas it was always talking about the pastor. The pastor is a good man who can be if he focuses a great elected official. But he has to have his own guest have confidence in himself. He has to believe that he can get the job done and so he's not waiting on somebody else. That's. What he needs to do, what he can do and. He's not going to be that person. Wait on people who really don't have his best interests in mind for him because if they did. They would have known, hey, look, well, I shouldn't be seeing giving you a job, but I can direct you in this place. We can gain employment or this place, right? Um but I shouldn't. Hold. Your future. Hold up your future for my personal ambitions. By promising you things that I know I can't deliver and I shouldn't legally be be looking like I'm trying to deliver, okay? Okay, so. That's the situation right now. And I again, it's got to stop, we need all hands on deck. Planning for a better Oakland to make this happen and. Um we have a situation now, we also have. A we had at large. A um. Uh a person. Who uh did something very terrible in terms of um murder. Of a patrol officer uh and um. Parole officer, I'm sorry, not parole officer and last time I checked that person was at large. And I'm looking at the update to see um what's going on, it's of course the wrong way, place to look at it. But. It seems like every time I turn around, these are the situations that are in the spotlight. Um in the spotlight. And it should be a big project, it should be something huge. And the mayor is playing small ball. Hey, I'm on live, how are you? That's okay, you're welcome to come on if you want. Okay, I'll send you a link, how's that? Okay, alright, see, okay. So um that's Brenda Grisham and I'm sending her a link because I want to I want to get. Her take on this, she's um. If you haven't noticed, Ms. Grisham is running for mayor, by the way. And even though she hasn't made a formal announcement, her name. Is listed as a mayoral candidate opposite the current mayor Barbara Lee. And uh. And so. I think that's uh good for her. Because as much as I personally love Mary Lee. I don't love the way she's running the city. Is too based on. This fear of going after big business, this fear of. Drawing investment and the fear is. An understandable an understandable concern for development of gentrification. But the way you solve that problem is by building affordable housing and that part. That part Mary Lee is absolutely right as opposed to rental housing. Affordable housing that can be purchased, even you know condominiums, right? So that we can maintain the ownership flow because right now. We have the strike of the corporate owned. The organizations that the corporate organizations that run around buying up. Housing only to rental rent them out. Not for ownership and that is a that serves. A bad, bad, bad forecast. For the ability of Americans to develop wealth in the future if we allow it to persist, it must stop. When I first got involved in urban planning and urban development. As a grad student at Cal. Homeownership and community development were new, in fact Pedro Noguera. Spearheaded the community development arm of the Department of City and Regional Planning at Berkeley. I believe it was the first in the country um Pedro really went through. Some criticism as is the case where you do something brand new, but he kept his focus. Uh is very charismatic, so he generated enormous following. And he did a lot of good for thousands arguably millions of people, so Pedro Noguera as far as I'm concerned. Is and his brother are heroes um that have um. Been celebrated and will never be forgotten for their accomplishments, haven't talked to them in some years, but. Um. Now. We're in a position where that that drive to develop the community which included homeownership. Is arguably waning and. The example of it waning is in all the numbers of homelessness homeless in Oakland. Uh stories like the one Derek Sue bought to Zinni sixty-two just a few days ago. Uh talking about a woman, he says uh. Took took fire to a couple of encampments. And you know, it would be best to have video of that, although you don't. Want to see you, you want to see the video to determine exactly who did it, right? Not for no other reason than that. Um now here's the pastor. Hey pastor, how are you?
I'm excellent, how are you doing? Good to hear from you.
Yes, are you you there?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Awesome, okay, folks, this is uh my friend, the legendary Pastor Fabian Robinson who um. Had his eye on the District six seat and I really encouraging him to run for it, I'm not. Going on to name the person who was offering her a job or anything like that, but I'm simply trying to encourage my friend. To find. Are you are you there? Are you going to turn your camera or? Oh yeah, oh, bad feedback, oh, hold on a second, let me fix something here. I think, oh, I know what's going on, the audio. Echo cancellation, that's on. Yeah, yeah, there you go, yeah, so my my friend here can be a fantastic elected official. And I don't think anybody should stand in the way of. Inevitable inevitable win and ability to serve the people of Oakland. Am I wrong, pastor?
Uh yeah, no, Vinnie, you're not wrong at all.
Oh, okay, oh, I think uh. I I lost you there, yeah, and I that's all I'm saying is that anybody who. Is, you know, if they really want to help you. The help should not be tied to a position, it should simply just be, hey. I have a friend over here who has this position for you, go over here. It shouldn't be, I will, if you I will, if you don't do a run, then I will do this for you, that's wrong. That's what I'm saying, and that's what got Shang into trouble and Andre. You know? That it's not something that. That in in the people that I'm talking about that are talking about doing this, they really don't have the power to do it. I think I lost him, he has a connection, but uh. He's the pastor is a giving man. Who um. Held a press conference a couple of years ago for a missing child in East Oakland. And brought a great deal of attention toward. Uh that family's plight of finding. He is um finding him. And. The pastor's always had this heart in the right place to make a difference. Uh and we need people like him in office, uh we don't need him held back. From his position, we need people to support him, he is a man of the cloth and we should always elevate. Pe- people of the cloth whenever possible, uh if if no other reason than for the moral. Standing and grounding they represent. That that's what should be job number one. And I'm concerned in this instance that it's not job number one, well, uh from the standpoint of who to get in there. I want to be clear, job number one from the economic development standpoint is business investment. Because Oakland has got it wrong for many, many years because. We elected Jerry Brown. And you know, myself included uh. Agreed that we needed more people in downtown. Which gave rise to the to ten K idea. Ten thousand people, but we didn't have a plan to develop downtown as a whole, we. Forgot about sports, in fact, Jerry Brown. Forgot about sports. In fact, Jerry Brown is the reason why the athletics arguably are not in Oakland. It was Jerry Brown who said. In two thousand two that there wasn't going to be a downtown ballpark. In Oakland as long as he was blanking mayor. And the blanking started with an F, okay? Jerry had this. To me, uh, less than rational. Uh dislike for sports. On. But then, if you drill down to a personal level. You found that Jerry ran, he played tennis, he played sports on a personal level. And I found that a number of people who said they didn't like sports in the Bay Area actually did like sports like tennis. Or running or golf, right? But when it came to, to be honest with you, the the sports that. Are. Of mass appeal, okay? They didn't like those sports. And if you dug deeper, you've discovered some other sinister takes that made you wonder. You know what was going on. And hey, here's one another one of my favorite people. Hey, Brenda, how you doing?
Hey, how are you?
I'm I'm blessed to have you here. Thank you so very much, yeah. Ladies and gentlemen, she, this is not. Her um, I'm not. I'm saying this because her name is there already. She's running for mayor of Oakland. Your name is there.
Is it Brenda?
But it's there. It's like I was thinking, why am I hating? I thought, wait a minute, if I go, let me show you this. Um, and and thank you for having you, but look at this. And you'll say, okay, I I see Zinni when you see what I'm about to show you, cuz I thought you knew it was there, alright?
It was weird.
I was, I'm showing you right now. I'm going when I'm going to Oakland news online dot com. You don't have to, I got it. And um, uh, what I'm showing you is this, excuse me. How come this won't come up like I wanted to? Wait a second. Sorry, okay. Um, that's not working like I want it to, but this is, there it is, alright. And as I go down here to Oakland News Online. There it is, alright? That's my Oakland News Hour. Should say this company owns it, Oakland News Online. And um. Has the Guardians of Lake Mary automatic automatically feeding news, but that's beside the point. I'm clicking on Oakland Elections. And it's taking me to this nice portal we can all see. And then if I scroll down. Right here, as I'm as I'm scrolling down, then I click on the. Uh, general election for. Twenty twenty eight. Uh, and then uh and uh, excuse me, I should be looking at his candidates right there. Sorry about, let me close this, alright? And you guys can see as I do this, but. The problem is that you may wanna have me zoom in a bit. So you can see better. So I'm zooming in there and I'm gonna do it again. Whoops, excuse me, that's I went the wrong way. It's been a long day, folks. One and then two and then one more time. There, okay, can you see that, Brenda? Okay, let me do it one more time to make it a little bit easier for moi. There it is, alright, okay? And then I click on candidates. And we have city auditor, city council, district two, city council, district four. City Council District Six Director, Director and the Mayor, City of Oakland. So we just scroll down a little bit, we click on that. And we have Latonya Brown and there's. There you are, Brenda.
Yeah, there I am.
You can't hide. Yeah, you see, you're trying to make it a secret. You know, I think you're like, huh? So uh Brenda, um, first of all. Run Brenda, run. Awesome. Run Brenda, run. And I and you, this doesn't have to be your your your. Uh. Your official announcement, but it, we can talk about it because. All I wanna know is, what was the Aha moment that made you say, you know what? I'm putting my hat in the rain because I'll be honest with you. I love Barbara Lee on a personal level, okay? But I. The direction of the city upsets me. What say you?
Well, the direction of the city is not people. Um driven, um, the purpose has to come from the people. And if you don't engage the people, you'll never get it right. Um, we have many issues. And you can't just pick and choose what issues. You have to build a team that's gonna allow you. To deal with every single issue that Oakland has. Um, and I'm I'm building a real really good team and I think it's gonna be, yeah, yeah, you gotta deal with all the issues.
Yeah, let's talk for a second about. What happened with the mayor's race from your perspective and the outcome? Why? Cuz we I've never had you on to talk about this and we can just, you know, I wanna hear what you thought. Why do you think Barbara won? Why do you think Lauren lost? And. And yeah, and everything having to do with that.
Well, um, a lot of it was, um, you know, chatter. Because I was the principal officer of one of the IEs. And so anybody that knows me, I'm gonna do it the right way. Um, there were some things that came up. And. If you're in politics, you know, the candidate has nothing to do with what IEs. Um, you know, put out, you know, they have to stand on what they're gonna stand on. So when I put out information.
Oh, tell them what IEs are, so.
Oh, independent expenditure organization. So we helped fund hit the campaign. Um, but whatever, we're running a campaign in itself. Um, and so, you know, what we portray helps the candidate. Well, there was a lot of misinformation. Um, because it was said that I doxed Barbara Lee. Well, if I didn't dox Pamela Price, why would I dox Barbara Lee?
Right.
Um, and so I went to her staff and was like, okay, there's some misinformation. You know, you guys need to put the right information out because they were. Putting my face on the pages, you know, this is her, this is the leader of the IE, this, that and the third. I was like, okay, hold up, let's back up. You know, and I asked him, I said, so.
That was awful mean, by the way. What they did was awfully mean.
Who?
Uh, in terms of putting your name out there, we were talking about.
They doxed her?
I'm saying what they were doing with respect to you was awfully.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it was mean. So what happened was. I asked for this email that supposedly my organization put out. Um, to a few people that doxed her. Well, in politics. I mean, you can't hide where you live. I mean, your address and stuff and you've been in politics all these years. How can somebody dox you? Um, but anyway, I asked for this information, it never came up. But I requested that they, you know, say something. Never did. So we moved on. A lot of it was a lot of misinformation and people felt that Lauren should not have ran against her. Because of her career. Oh, you gotta stand on what you stand on. It doesn't matter what you did in the past, what you're gonna do for the city now. Is what, you know, it should have been based on. Whatever she said she was gonna do for the city. That's how you vote, not because of her political stance in Washington. I know people in Washington too. I know a lot of people in Washington, a whole bunch of people. You know, I just sat in Kamala Harris's office, I didn't sat in Nancy Pelosi's office. You know, so we we're not gonna do all that. Um, what whoever has the best interest at heart of the city. Is who you should pick. You know, you gotta, we gotta make these conscious choices. And when we did the campaign. For um, you know, to recall Pamela Price. I took, had to take the good with the bad. And what I went to every single city in Alameda County. Cuz I had to. I couldn't just stay in Oakland and try to win over Oakland. I had to go to every. City. And it's a board, it's a bunch of them, you know, and I stepped foot in every one of them. Um, and with Oakland, you gotta step foot in every block of this city and talk to every single person. And you know, every single nationality, you know, get in into the cracks and the crevices. And that usually never ever happens. And we're in a state right now where it it needs to be done.
Yeah, with um, going back to that time. Do you feel that's where Lauren lost is that he basically thought he had the. Uh, it to me, it looked like he he was, he was content to have the White Hill. Group or I would say more, I used to say more accurately because it isn't totally white anymore. The money group, the class group, right? Um, it isn't fair to say that they're all white anymore cuz they're not.
And they all fair to say that they was all rich cuz I did, you know, it is what it is. I ran the IE. I could tell you how we got our money, you know, with everyday citizens that donated just like, you know, to the recall. Everyday citizens gave. Hundreds, thousands of people gave their money, but you know, they always focus on the billionaires and things of that nature. And that's really unfair to both candidates um and the people. Of the cities and the counties because they they matter as well. You know, they put they little. Whatever it is, if they put five dollars in, they donated to a cause that they felt was worthy.
Absolutely, absolutely. And what bothered me about Barbara's approach. Was that fundraiser that she did early on. That called for a one hundred thousand dollar, I'm still wrapping my mind around. I would do this. You know, ticket. Uh, five hundred dollars at the low end, one hundred thousand at the high end. For her inauguration party. And I'm, and I can understand. Hundred percent. If she just simply needs to raise money, like it's Lauren's birthday, he says, hey, I need to raise money to clear a candidate pain day.
Right.
Do it that way, but to present it as some sort of party. With these gates. I thought was a mistake. What did you think? Am I happy to be wrong if you think I'm wrong?
Well, I really didn't pay no attention. I, you know, I had a whole bunch of other really. Important things to be dealing with at the time, like, you know, I still go to court with the families. I got a murder case in the morning.
Yeah, talk about that real quick, can you?
Um, well. When I started the recall, I started. To be there for families. What people thought I was just gonna leave them cuz the recall was over, absolutely not. I'm in court three, four times a week. Sometime I have two or three people in the same courtroom. Hayward, I mean, I'd be in Dublin and Etho Jay, Renee C. Davidson and Wally Manuel, you know, it. It's what I have to do. I've made a pledge to these families. And just the families with the recall are not the only families that I deal with. I deal with other families. Um, you know, that would just mishandle it by the system. And so I'm, I'll be there to see it through. And I ain't gonna stop, you know, till they're, you know, they they get whatever they feel is um is right for the families. So the Kevin Ashida case, we will be in court tomorrow for the Kevin Ashida case.
Oh, by the way, there was a Mr. Love too that I had talked to. Um, and I I lost touch with him. He was, oh. When I interviewed him, I never had anyone on my show cry as much as he did. But he was. Arrested after he ran a light. Apparently outstanding war was a failure to appear. Uh, he was alleged to have hit. A homeless individual trying to clear up a problem. On a homeless encamp.
Oh, yeah, Deandre. Oh, they dropped the charges? You thought they wasn't?
Yeah, he was, that poor man, he didn't.
Oh, it was devastating.
So basically what you're saying is I helped get the word out?
No, I did. When I went there, no, but yeah, you did too, yeah. You know, it's it's funny.
You're the person who told me about him.
Yeah, so it was funny because when I was talking to somebody last night about something. And you know, I tell him, I'd go and be sitting there and not tell him who I was during the recall, you know? And um, and then when I said my name, then things would change. But I wanna, I wanted to see. What the process was, if you didn't know, the person that was in charge of the recall was sitting there. Um, and I had went to a resentencing case. And it wasn't going the way of, you know, the person else to be resenticed. The judge had decided he wasn't gonna resentice him. For very good reasons, and I appreciate the fact that he wasn't gonna resentice him. But then the man gonna say, he said, well, you know, I think this case is compromised cuz the leader of the recall is in the room. And I was like. And everybody turned around, I was like, oh man, cuz I've been had been sitting there, you know, through the whole process of the resent. I don't go and say, hey, I'm Brenda Grisham, how you doing? No, I'm looking at the process. I'm looking at the. Advocates to see if they're interacting with the families or if the families have advocates at all. Um, you know, the whole demographics of these cases. And so. Um, yeah, that was a funny moment for me. And then when we went outside, it's like, yeah, it's nice to meet you. I said, was that necessary? He's, I think, so you know how this works. I said, no, I don't. And I didn't like it at all. But you know, he. He didn't get resenticed at that time, but they did resentice him out in um later on, um, and he is out. Um, and he he, no, he shouldn't have been out. You know, yeah, he committed a murder, a very heinous murder. Um, and then uh he was on drugs and he was with some hookers and, you know, he um. He robbed the man. For his vehicle, so he has some place for his women and he shot him in the head and dumped him on the side of the road.
Oh, my lord.
And so last year, yeah, so he was sentenced, finally sentenced in December, but the year before that, they found meth in his cell. So that means he was still dibbling and dabbling. Um, but for various reasons, you know, he was released um about a week ago. To the wrong place, you know, to a a area where drugs and, you know, hookers are. And that's what his fueled his crime. And I thought that was kinda unfair on both ends cuz he just got put back in a situation that. You know, he might.
What what bothered me about the interview that I did was this feeling that. He was trapped in an urban cage. You know, where wherever he turned. From his perspective, the cops were pursuing him. Somebody was looking at him a certain way. And from what you're telling me about what he did now, which I didn't hear before. It sounds like that has triggered him to be a person that he doesn't really wanna be.
Who are we talking about now?
Well, okay, um. You know, I started to mix up the gentleman that I that was released that I that I interviewed at your behest with somebody else you're talking about.
Oh, not about somebody else.
Okay, okay, good.
I know a whole bunch of families, you know. Yeah, you know, some is, some cases are just unfortunate. Some cases, you know, um, I have cases that. You know, I I deal with murderers as well, you know, but they still deserve what they deserve. Um, people that were in the passenger seat when somebody else murdered somebody and they're trying to get out. I deal with all of that. It's just not a one-way street for me. Justice is what it is. So I have families. That have one child that was murdered and one child that's killed somebody. And you gotta fight for them both, you know what I mean? And that's kinda hard on families. When a mother has to fight for both of her children, her dead child and a child that actually took the life of somebody else.
So let me ask you, as mayor. Uh, are you gonna have a focus that brings big business back to Oakland?
We gotta do that. Um, I actually have a chat with the business owners. And so um. About a month and a half ago, I put a meeting together with the district attorney and the chief of police. And some business owners. And we had like forty-five business owners in the room. And so, you know, we kinda came to an understanding because I told him, I said, now. Y'all got to be willing to give something too. This is gonna be, got to be a partnership. They can't do it alone and y'all can't do it alone. And I told him, I said, you know, when they have these meetings, public safety, all this, you guys need to come and and let them hear from you. Not just hear from me or, you know, Chief Mitchell, um, they need to hear from you. And the day of the meeting, the seven eleven on Fifth Avenue got hit twice. And then the store on.
Twice in one day.
Twice in one day. And then the AMPM on MacArthur was hit and the one on Seventy-third, all in one day. You know, um, there's a, there was a um. They were trying to put a homeless shelter down in Chinatown at the hotel. I don't know if you heard of that. It's real new.
Uh, yeah, I remember, yeah, I remember that, uh, Charlie Wang got involved in that.
Yes, so my views are, why are we giving, why are we using? Revenue generating businesses when we got empty buildings over here? That's a very nice hotel. When the city could use it, we have all kinds of people. All kinds of organizations that have conferences and things of that nature. There's somebody right there.
Yeah, and I'm glad she made that decision because I remember, I don't wanna put too much, I'll just parse this a certain way. There was a certain conversation that um, she was one of my clients. Um, but. They wanted to weigh in on the Jack London Square Hotel situation. And I said, I don't think. The Jack London Square Hotel is a good place for a homeless shelter. It's highest and best use, right? And we had a nice little argument about it. So I'm, I I'm, now that I see the decision she's made. Apparently others who think like we do have gotten, you know. To her and she's 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 listened and realized that we need um. We we can't take away, just as you said, we can't take away our our revenue producing areas. For non-revenue producing area. Which should be someplace else, you know, um, that's just. That's just logical. It hurts us in ways if we wanna do re- use redevelopment. Then we don't get the proper tax increment financing boost because we have a homeless shelter. Where major hotel once stood. In the middle of other, you know, uses that are still. Um, at their highest and best use. It's kinda like, what?
You know, Chinatown is bustling, you know, it doesn't matter. You know, when you go out in Chinatown. You know, Chinatown is bustling, you know, it doesn't matter. You know, when you go out in Chinatown, it's people everywhere. They buying their fruit, they buying their vegetables, they buying their seafood. So, you know, um, high traffic areas like that. Um, you know, you gotta be real wise what you're doing. Um, and it's not the best place for them where they can get the best services either, because it's too, it's too congested, you know, um.
That kind of develops some, some security for them, doesn't it though? You know, congestion, but we don't have any other areas of downtown like we used to. Do we?
We don't have what?
We don't have a lot of congested areas downtown.
No, we don't. And we need to come back to that. It's so too many empty buildings, um.
Yeah, there's some people who are saying, hey, we need to force people to come back to work, but I don't think, this is my thought. I don't believe we can make them do that, but what I believe the city should do. Is build five hundred units of worker housing. We've never done that before, right? And then put them within a quarter mile radius, not greater than that of City Hall, so it's walkable. What are your thoughts?
Who gonna walk downtown?
Well, that's, no, that's a good question. I mean, my point is that. If, in fact, it's a brilliant question. My point, my counter. Is that if these. Housing units, which also have retail, are designed in unison so that uh. They are obviously walkable to City Hall and or, and we have offices within those buildings, which are City of Oakland. Less we need to walk a distance.
Right, they could go downstairs today. Yeah, that's something a little different, but you know, a lot of people that work. Um, you know, uh, have homes and stuff like that, but yeah, that's, that's.
Yeah, but people who want to, to, people coming out of grad school, looking for housing. They wanna be in the part of the mixed downtown, the parties and all that sort of thing, you know, because when you're young, you want that sort of thing. There it is to have and work for the City of Oakland and right be in the mix, and we don't offer that.
Yeah, we don't.
That's right. Pastor Robinson says, uh, we gotta do this the right way. He was texting me. Uh, he says, we gotta do this the right way. Oh, okay, so that's about.
What he was doing?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, he doesn't like that I'm doing this. He's, he doesn't like that I'm talking, uh, talking about him on the air, but. The thing about it.
Oh, did I miss that part?
What you, what happened was this originally started as. Two weeks ago, and I'll just say, I'm saying this. He encouraged, he says, I wanna come on your show, I wanna talk about running for District Six. Great. So I made this edifice, which is interview with Pastor, I'm gonna take your. Conversation and break it up. It says, interview with Pastor Robinson of the Oakland City Council District Six seat. It didn't see that he was gonna run for it. It gave him room to talk about it, right?
Right, to give you direction.
Yeah, right. And then someone told him, well, don't, don't talk about that, because I'm gonna give you a job. Thank you. Okay, that's wrong. You, you know it's wrong. I know it's wrong. Andre Jones knows it's wrong. Right?
Really? Yeah, well, that's not.
Okay.
That's a pay to play.
Right, and I'm just saying, hey, you know, Pastor, you're a good man. You have a lot to offer the people. Don't get involved in that. You know, you don't, you don't need to. And it's like, I can't talk to the man. You know, I thought he was gonna come on, he didn't, he hemmed and hawed. I thought, you know what? I'm gonna go and do this anyway, because I've been holding this vessel here and it looks bad to have. Uh, on zinnireport.com, you have this, literally you have this, this place where this picture. And you click on it, it's, it's waiting and it's waiting. And I'm thinking, no, 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 I'm not gonna do that. No, 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 no. And then, then I thought. I said, you know what? I need to be the person to talk about this because there are certain people who I love. Who have positions that I love that they're there, but I don't love. That they're using these positions and thinking that they're kind of like King Kong and all that. And um, doing things like uh. Saying, well, it's new sheriff in town, new day, and you can't do this and all this something else, you know?
Just gave it up right there.
For some, yes, for others, they'll kind of like, who, what, what, huh, 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 I'm gonna leave it right there.
Right, right, right.
Because. The person I'm talking about. If he finds his North Star, can be one of the best elected officials we've ever had. I believe. I believe, that's just me, okay? But, but that's what I'm getting at, you know, it's kind of like. I thought, you know what, let me, let me get in and just talk about it. And by talking about it, maybe I can just fix it a little bit. Just to get, just to say, hey, folks. We have people out here like yourself doing a tremendous job who need our help. Uh, who need our support and our backing. We need Rocket Mortgage or some more, the organization in here. Developing jobs. Thousands of jobs. When's the last time you heard that? We're gonna bring thousands of jobs. It's like housing, good, I get it, but it's rental housing. We need ownership.
Right, and then if you look at the developments that they're building now, they have retail stores at the bottom that are empty.
Yeah, yeah.
That's a problem.
Right, huge.
That's a problem, yeah.
And it'd be, you know why they're empty? Because people are buying these things on this.
Absolutely.
Right?
Anything you can find, everything you want, you can get it there.
Yeah, some say, if you're gonna do that instead of having that, why not the old fashioned workspace, which is a coffee place? Where people can get together and socialize while they're making their money, because I used to do that. I used to, I, I would have to go to um. This place called uh. Eat uh, the, the grill. In San Francisco, they had one in the Marina District and the other uh, on Fillmore, you know, Fillmore. And um, uh, Fillmore and Jackson. Uh, you could, they had great salads, you could sit down, put on your headphones, do your work. But also because there are other people in the internet business or in businesses that require internet use. You met other people who needed your services or. You, you know, it was great just to sit there. You'd say, hey, look, I heard you talking about this, and you could socialize. We don't have that in Oakland.
Right, we don't.
You know, and why not develop that? Something like that, that would be huge. Right there, rather than the common, simple retail space, something that's more. That is more adjusted to how we live today.
Right, yeah, and you know, you have to bring that into today. And it, it's a lot of stuff that can be done that just haven't been done. Because people are looking with lenses that just go straight, and you have to look from all angles. You know, you gotta be geared toward the younger, younger entrepreneurs and the younger people that are coming to offices and. You know, working and you gotta navigate that system just a little different.
Absolutely.
Yeah, but that takes talking to the people, talking to them in order to learn and build something around it.
Yep, absolutely right. Hey, so is Seneca helping you on your run?
No.
I'm shocked, seriously. No, I, I thought. I thought he would be in there saying, hey, look, she should be the next mayor and all this sort of thing, and I guess.
He didn't need to know I was running till you just said something. So I don't know, I don't know Seneca like that, so people.
I didn't know that.
He's cool guy, you know, I don't, he's cool guy. I met him during the recall. I didn't know Seneca before then. So people thought, think that me and Seneca is like partners. I didn't know Seneca before then. I understand his drive. Um, and so, you know, he's fervent in whatever he believes in. Um, but yeah, I have a team already.
And so um, I have to ask you. About our police situation. On a scale of one to ten. Where's our police department? One is like in the tank, ten is, oh, we're fantastic. Where is it?
Well, we all know they're not fantastic. Um, and that's because we have a lot, a lot of opposition. I have been attending the. Public safety meetings and, you know, people just don't really understand the demographics of the police department. And, you know, it's defund the police, defund it, but defund the police. Um, you know, since I work with the victims, I know for a fact that there are only twelve officers in homicide. But those officers after, actually have to be on the street as well. How can they solve a homicide if they're on the street? There's only three people working cold cases, three. Working cold cases, and they have to go on the street as well. It's three.
How many cold cases do we have?
Oh, we have thousand, we have, we have a lot. You know, we have a lot, um. But my daughter, she, um, my daughter is an advocate as well. She works for Youth Alive. And so she's been going back and forth to Sacramento testifying. There's a bill that uh, Assemblyman Gibson out of Los Angeles. Um, has put before the um, assembly that helps families. With um, you know, getting a second look at their cold cases. Now, when you go to, when you go to assembly, when you go to Sacramento, you gotta fight, because they've had him amend the bill like three times. At first, it was. After one year, then it was after two years, and then yesterday she. Before the Senate at, in Sacramento, and um, it was passed, but they moved it to three years. So your case has to be cold for three years before a family member can request for it to be reviewed. Which is fine. That, that's still good, because they get that option to go to a higher power and request, you know? It, it's unfortunate that people don't understand, we really need seven hundred officers. There's no ifs, ands or buts. Yeah, you know, and that's just not all the officers on the street or whatever. We just need seven hundred officers, because there's a lot of work to be done. And we can't do it effectively with the force we have now.
And what I don't understand, and this gets to a peeve I have. We could get that money. If we established. Enhanced infrastructure financing district zones. And I talked to, um, I'm not gonna say the council member's name, I talked to because it was a private conversation. Um, this person was saying, well. We had a report on that last year, and I said, yeah, I, I know. That was a Sperry report. And I call it amateur hour, and the reason why I called it that was. They left the council with the impression that you establish. These tax increment financing zones. Folks, you don't know what that is. The property tax dollar you pay generally goes one part to Bart, one part AC Transit, one part to our school district. One part the county, one part uh, the city's general fund. And so, under, when you establish what we used to call redevelopment zone, now we call it an enhanced infrastructure financing district zone, which is long-winded. All right, that money basically all comes into the control of the City of Oakland. Do something called the Public Financing Authority, but it's one hundred percent of the dollar, right? Take that and you can use it to give it to businesses to refurbish. Because you could say, hey, look, they were damaged because of the pandemic. That's AB four six four Mullen. And or you can also use it for affordable housing or both. Uh, now you can use it to, guess what? Rehabilitate fire stations. As a, yeah, that's a brand new law. Uh, passed last September twenty-second, signed the law by Gavin.
Okay.
Assemblymember Walton. Uh, was the drafter of that adjustment, enhanced infrastructure financing district law. My point. We can do that, and we, and guess what? Brendan, when we use tax increment financing. Uh, as a, as a additional source of revenue, we paid city staff with it. So it didn't all come in the general fund.
Right.
If you go back and look at our finances then, yeah, we ran deficits, but they're much lower.
And then that, yes.
Right, and I'm saying, hey, look, let's go back to what we did do. Jerry killed it, but what happened was the brain drain was like. Seriously, this is like, hey. Now, you know, I was saying it to a couple of people, well, that's over my head. I thought, well, over your head. We're really stuck, and then the city hires consultants, but they don't have anybody in house. To catch the error, so what we get is some, now this is gonna shock you when I tell you. Do you realize that they actually finally finished? The tax increment financing, preliminary calculations for Howard Terminal, and they came up with. A revenue collection forecast of five billion.
What?
Yes.
Well, it's kind of late now, huh?
Yeah, and that's, when they, when they released the document, which by the way, wasn't, you know, a public announcement.
Right.
I found it online by accident. Same month that the A's were before the Nevada Legislature. Okay, so you know, by then it was kind of like, hey, and I have Cabal on my show, umpteen times saying, hey, look, we need to get this thing moving. And it wasn't.
Right.
You know, and so my point is that we have that kind of economic development malpractice. It's no wonder we're losing businesses because they're not getting the assistance they need, which just so happens to be the same kind of assistance that. People running individual businesses out of their homes need. Right? And gone. So my point is that we haven't done, we have done nothing to get it back. Then we have the elected official saying, I can get a grant for you. Excuse me. Get the grant. But also use tax increment financing so that we can bring. You know?
Extra.
Read, yeah, yeah, redirect that.
Yeah.
So um, you know, simple, simple.
Is that Fabian talking to you?
No, he was trying to. He was trying, he's, he's, he's texting me. Um, but you know, the whole point is that. What, what he has to understand is he has to trust that. I've been around a while. And I can, you know, I am not trying to do him a bad way. I'm trying to make sure that. He, he, he gets on a path that'll help him.
Right.
That's all I'm trying to do. And um. That's not arrogance, that's what a friend does.
Well, if he came to you for guidance, then he should have knew you wasn't gonna steer me in the wrong direction.
No, and I'm not gonna allow him as bad as that sounds. But I, I'm not gonna allow him, if I have anything to do about it, to go down a path that's caused others to go to jail. You know, that, that kind of quip or quote stuff, I don't care if you're on the, if you're on the other end of it, somebody's gonna.
It still doesn't matter, it's still not right.
They're gonna get you in trouble. So it's, so, you know. Unfortunately, it's, it's early in the game for that to actually go down. Sort of, but the whole point is. Yeah, and anyway, so he's, he'll, 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 he's mad at me now, yeah.
Ain't like it ain't never happened before. Had a few people manage you.
Not, I don't enjoy it, but you know, anyway, but so, um. Getting back to Charlene and Chinatown and everything else. How do you think Charlene is doing as a councilman?
Well, you know, she's my councilperson. Yeah, that's my district.
Okay, I did not know that, okay.
Yeah, that's my district. So me and her, and, and it's funny because it's where it is, and everybody knows that's predominantly. Asian, and as far as I know, it's only two African Americans that have businesses in that area. Um, from Fifth, or not just Asians, you know, um, the seven eleven owners and, you know, things of that nature, but it. It's only two of us, and I think we in the same building. It's a real estate office upstairs, and then I have four businesses in my building. And so, um, you know, me and her talk constantly about the human trafficking, because it's right in front of my office. Um, I deal with those young ladies every single day. Um, so right now, you know, it's a learning period for her, um, but. She's doing okay. You know, when you get in those, you can't talk to a whole bunch of people that's steering you in the wrong direction. Because SB three fifty-seven has been in existence since twenty twenty-two. Lordering is legal. So you can't just roll up and throw them in a car. Um, we're fighting for AB three seventy-nine. Now, somebody told her about AB three seventy-nine. That is to make. Um, it a felony to buy certain age. Young ladies or and men, because there are men out there as well, and you get a felony and then you're charged a thousand dollar fine that's supposed to go into a fund. To help human trafficking victims now. She, all of them aren't trafficked. Some of those, some of them don't have PIPs, they're called renegades, and they're out there for various reasons. And so when you're dealing with that, you gotta deal with the demographics of what the truth is. You know, you hear people say, you know, they're trafficking, there's, some of them pull up in Mercedes Benz and BMWs. And park them around the corner and stand out there and make money.
My mother called me real quick. Can you hold on for one second? I'll be right back. Be back Brenda. Just gotta make sure she gets this.
No problem.
Thanks. She's. That. And that, okay. So let's see here. That should do that and. Medicine man for my mom, so. I'll be right back. Okay.
Okay.
Okay, I'm back. Well, you know. Should I take this call, Brenda?
Sure.
Okay. Uh, my friend, I'm on the air. Hello. He hung up. He hung up.
You didn't answer it quick enough.
Say hi to Brenda.
Hey. Fabian.
We're live, man.
What Brenda that is?
Brenda Grisham.
Oh, hey Brenda, how are you doing?
Fine, how are you?
Good, good, good. Um, one thing I'd like to say about Brenda, uh. That she is one of the strongest ladies who I know. And without Brenda, it was inevitable to pass a favor.
There you go.
We love to tell everybody that.
Well, it's true.
That's, 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 that's the truth. I remember, uh, when I was first coming out. And Brenda always let me on stage and always let me talk and Brenda was just always, you know, always a great person.
Hey Pastor, why don't you grab the, uh, camera and come on in?
Uh, I'm, I'm out, I'm out with my daughter right now.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, but, uh, so, so what are we talking about?
Well, we were talking about Brenda's, um. Run for mayor because actually listed on, uh.
Which I didn't know. It was about to be a secret. But you got the noses.
Mad at me. I said, hey, I didn't put this up here.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Now I know, yeah.
And, uh, we talked about, uh, her. Uh, focus on helping people who really need help. Doesn't matter what their situation is. Um, and, uh, the need to get, uh, businesses in and investment in the city and. Uh, her concerns about, uh, the police department being understaffed. And then we started talking about Charlene Wang. So, and then we talked about you and that whole situation regarding. You know, and I thought you should run and I still think you should run.
Uh, check it out, uh. Uh, D five. What, D six, D six.
D six.
This is what I'd be running for.
Yeah.
Uh, if I do run, uh, every, everywhere I go. From Maxwell Park to the Flatlands everywhere, everybody say Pastor Fabian, Pastor Fabian. And, uh, and whenever I make that decision, Ziddy, you're just person enough. And, and, and can, and can nobody stop me from making any decision that I wanna make?
Okay.
Uh, uh, and, um. What, what else? Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. And, uh, I wanna say, uh, your respect to the parole officer. I guess the probation officer or parole officer that got killed in Oakland.
Yeah, you hear about that Brenda, parole officer that got killed?
Absolutely.
Yeah, that's what he's talking about. Go ahead, Ken. Go ahead, go ahead.
And what I'm saying that I would never, uh, come out on a day when one tragedy like this happens. When anybody lose a life, anybody, uh, uh, it, it is a tragedy.
Yeah.
It is a tragedy.
He's still at large, right?
No.
Oh, good, okay. Wow.
And, uh, and one thing about it, uh, I gotta give, uh, Brenda props. She is not scared of nobody. She not scared of nobody. She out here helping the family and don't care who got a problem with it. She still, you know, gonna do her thing. And I respect her for it.
Thank you.
And I, you know, uh, but, but like I say, Ziddy, uh. Oakland, Oakland, we gotta, we gotta become stronger Oakland. And, and, and the way we become stronger Oakland, we all need to unite.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. This is one, this is one way to do it. I got the two of you here, right?
Uh, yeah, yeah, yeah. You know what? And, and, and I'll tell you what, uh. Uh, if I would, uh. Listen to Brenda Grisham, I might've got a lot more votes than what I did get. How about that?
But you can make up for that. You can help her on her mayoral campaign, right?
Oh, are you, are you running? Are you running, um, Brenda?
Say my name is on the website as a candidate.
Well, what's, what's your name on the website? Hey, let me tell you. Okay, I, I, Brenda, Brenda, Brenda is my friend and I, and I'd be glad for the support from Brenda.
He said it here. He said he'd be glad to support you.
Uh-huh. Okay, Fabian.
No, 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 what I'm saying, hey, 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 I didn't, I didn't said it. I didn't said it. You know what I mean? Uh, cause like I said, one thing about we, we're, we're losing too many kids. Uh, we are losing too many people and Laurent Armstrong still ain't got his job back.
Yeah.
So let's talk about that.
Laurent is fine. He fine. He, he over there. He fine.
No, 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 no. You know what? You know what? With people dying, that was the greatest, that was the greatest police team that we ever had.
He was, yeah.
Nobody take his place. Chief Mitchell is growing into his own right now. Um, he, you know, I was kind of skeptical. Um, but you know, I've watched him grow, um, you know.
What's he doing now, by the way?
Who? Laurent?
Yeah.
Uh, he's teaching, he's coaching at, uh, Bishop Hodel.
Bishop Hodel.
Okay.
He's retired.
Laurent is a hero. And Laurent knows if they come calling saying that we need Laurent Armstrong, Laurent will be right back.
He's a great man. We was lucky to have him.
No, I think some of the people that led to like our current chief administrative officer. Uh, engineered his ouster, although technically it was, in fact, it was Reenia Webb who first turned me on to the fact that. Um, uh, they applied a hit job to get him out of there. Um, well, Reenia Webb, she wasn't the first that told me that. I won't, but, uh, she was, she was, she basically didn't. She gave me a lot more information to, to fill, uh, the story about what Shang was trying, was trying to do. Um, because Re- Reenia resigned. On the, on the day, on the day of the swearing in. Because this is where this all started. Because she believed she didn't like how Andre Jones put her hands on her and, you know, all that's, it was, um. And in a fit of pick, she put out an email that was really supposed to go to five. Media organizations. It wound up coming to me.
Are you a media organization?
Right, but she didn't intend it for me.
Oh, okay.
She didn't intend it for like little black media. Okay. She hates when I, she hates when I say that, but. Like, you know, hey, and instead I got it and why come it didn't get to Channel Five?
Cause I got it.
That's right.
You got me.
Yeah, but not only that, it went to every person in the city of Oakland, Brenda. That, yeah. Yes, she sent that email that she meant for like five people in the media, she said. But she hit, she put it on, it also, she gave it to Ian, Ian, who was the, uh. The city council representative at the time, HR guy. And then she put it on the basic email for the entire city. Annoyingly. And so Pamela Ferdinand sent it to me. Yeah, that's how I got it. I was, I was like, I still laugh at that.
You got to be careful. You gotta read that two or three times, you know.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, yeah. But, uh, wow, I, it, it. Um, I forgot what I was going to say from that. I got caught up, so caught up in that story. But anyway, pastor, um.
Yeah.
So. Why do you think Brenda Grisham will make a great mayor?
Why I think Brenda Grisham would make a great mayor? Brenda Grisham would stand up in front of anybody and try to do what's right. She's trying to do what's right. Uh, 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 Brenda had been a fighter. I was the first one. For the thing that Brenda gonna do, oh, I don't want that job. You just see, uh, way back in two thousand, uh, five, what, twenty or nineteen, and I said, um. Uh, Brenda will make a good mayor. Uh, uh, Brenda loves people. She do it. And I, and I, and I don't care who, uh, you know, try to blackball because of this, uh, but, but Brenda is a fighter. And Brenda, and Brenda, uh. She's a challenger, uh, uh, and, and she knows the people who have been affected. By, uh, losing children. She knows the people who have been affected by getting robbed. She knows the people that have been affected by the virus in Oakland. And, um, Miss Brenda is a, uh, like I say. She is a, she is a good person and she is a person that I love. And like I say, would never been a pastor favor. On the news almost all the time because of Brenda Grisham.
There you go.
And I, and I love her and I, and I, and I thank her for that for the rest of my life.
You're welcome.
There you go.
And we, and we, and we only been lovely, lovely buddy, buddy. So this must be real.
Got that right.
So it must be real. It must be real, you know, you know, and, uh. And one thing that you can bet on. And, um, and, and this is your grand choice. So you know, you could, um, but one thing you bet on with Brenda. Is that Brenda gonna fight, she gonna fight and people gonna get behind her because she gonna fight. She's a fighter. She's a fighter. Even, even when her life was threatened, she still fought. You can't say that about too many people. Their lives are threatened and they quit. Still fought. And I, and I respect her for that.
Thank you.
There, there you go. There you go. Hey, so I thought. Something else I wanted to ask you too, Brenda. Um, we were talking about the police. How did we get to? From your perspective, defund, I thought. After the murder of George Floyd, the conversation was for the police to stop killing black men.
Right.
What happened?
And when's the last time that the police in Oakland murdered anybody?
Hmm.
Not with Laurent Armstrong.
I can't think of any, but I mean, in terms of.
Well, so that portion of it, you know, shouldn't even come into play. They play on words with defunding police. That's number one.
Now, one thing I gotta bring up because I get in trouble if I don't.
If I may, I was thinking like the national conversation, right? Um, it went from, it would even, even if, yeah, I'm not talking, I wasn't thinking specifically about Oakland police. But I am thinking about a climate. That has been largely hostile to black men in terms of, uh. Well, hey, you did something, arrest you. Hey, put them in jail for this, whereas they used to just.
But you know, we changed the atmosphere, Laurent Armstrong.
I, I get that, I get that.
Well, he's talking about nationally.
Yeah, I get that, but I'm saying that Pastor, I'm saying that nationally. Where do we go? Why do we get to defund rather than stop killing black men? Because a black man was killed and that's how all this was started.
That's how it started. Absolutely.
That's all I'm saying, you know?
Well, like I said, people play on words when they're talking about defunding, not just here in Oakland, you know, cause I've. Travel to different states and you know what I mean? Washington every December, planning my trip now, um, you know, um. And I listen to Hakeem Jeffries, you know, he speaks about, uh, last year Kamala Harris' husband spoke. To, you know, the families or whatever. And so, um. It changes kind of with the wind. The purpose was what it was, but then people take the purpose. And make it to their own understanding. We were talking about this black man was killed. And so, big thing, just like if you remember, um, Nancy Pelosi and them. They stood in the emancipation room. Now, I've been to Washington a bunch of times. Never knew it was an emancipation room. But we settle is the problem. They stood in the emancipation room and they made all these promises and what happened with that? They still in the emancipation room. Because we settle for right now and don't move and make it happen. You know what I mean? So the need for law enforcement is what it is. But the need for us to stand up for our people is what it is too. And they got to balance and we just never. Get the balance, you know, it's one way or the other. So, yeah.
What about that Pastor?
Uh, when I look at this situation with, uh, you have a lot of people that have, that are still with black people. And never had a relationship to black people. You know, that are, that are poor, you know, and that's why I have proposed to many people over. For, uh, hire Oakland first. Hire people that live in Oakland, hire Oakland people first. And Charlene Wang had to do the same thing. Uh, Charlene Wang who, um, who out the. Uh, Charlene Wang, who, um, who I support.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and, and, and I would support the rest of my life, so, um.
Brenda lives in her district.
Yeah, no, my businesses are in her district.
Her business, I stand corrected, yeah.
So, 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 it's, uh, no, no, I'm saying, even your business in her district, Charlene Wang is trying so hard for to change the whole atmosphere, Charlene Wang is out there fighting. You know, uh, uh, and sometimes her hands are tied.
Hmm.
You know, but, hey, I'll tell you this, uh, Charlene Wang is a fighter.
I gotta get her to come on, I keep, you know, I keep saying, Charlene, come on, now that you're council member, call the show.
Yeah, you know, she gotta run again, so, you know, I hope she's gearing her campaign up, um, you know, based off of the things that she's done right now, um, you know, cause people can see her. And that's gonna help her get reelected.
Yeah.
Depending on who's running against her.
That's right. Hey, let's do, let's do this, I, I want to have you all back again, it's getting to me to, uh, where I've got to take care of some little chores for my mom.
Absolutely.
Uh, but, this has been a great ninety minute program. See, I turn, see Pastor, I turn wa, I turn water into wine.
You did, that's what you did.
I would be sending you somebody a big endorsement, somebody.
You hear me? Say that again Pastor?
I would be sending you a big endorsement, somebody who endorsed me, uh, you know, everybody love Pastor Fabian.
Okay, you got it, you got it.
Uh, listen, listen, um, I want to tell you this, I would never, ever, 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 uh, uh, try to fight against Oakland, I fight with Oakland.
There you go.
And, um, and the thing about it is that, um, Brenda Grisham did the same thing she fought with Oakland, Brenda Grisham, Brenda Grisham lost, lost the championship. That was, that, that's what a lot of people don't understand, you know what I mean, I don't understand losing a child, when you lose a child, that is something that somebody have stolen from her.
Mm-hmm.
They stole from her, and then people act like it's just a reckless thing, it's not a reckless thing. It's not a reckless thing, if somebody kills some, somebody, we need justice. You know, you know, you know, I wish Brenda had a law degree, so she could have been a, uh, she could have been a, uh, being here for Oakland.
Mm-hmm.
That's interesting, because I'm going to Harvard right now, I was accepted to Harvard a few months ago.
Oh, congratulations.
My criminal justice degree, so, I got some homeworks that I need to turn in later on, but yeah, so, finishing my criminal justice degree.
Congratulations, that's, 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 wow, that's huge, hey, so folks, uh.
Hold on, hold on, let me get straight.
Okay.
I'm not, I, I think Barbara Lee, Barbara Lee, Barbara Lee is doing a good job now.
Mm-hmm.
And, 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 and say, why you saying, baby? Uh, just walk down Oakland, Oakland, Oakland a little bit more peaceful now, you know. Uh, uh.
I want to see hustle and bustle, I want to see cranes everywhere, I want to see rebuild, I want to see investment, where we behind, I want to see the Raiders back, or NFL, I want to see the NFL, you know, yeah, I want to see it all, I want what we have, man, we're a big city, okay?
Ziddy, let me tell you, I'm not worried about the Raiders, I worry about serial murders in Oakland.
No, but here's the thing, Pastor, Pastor, you cannot, no one can deny that on football days, or basketball, we're in the, when the Warriors win NBA finals, you didn't hear about people killing each other, did you?
The NBA finals, the NBA finals, the NBA finals don't mean nothing when somebody lose a child.
Yeah, but, 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 I, I understand, but Pastor, I'm saying, right, I get it.
Caliandros, Berkeley, Emoryville, we want a safe Oakland.
Right, but Pastor, what I'm saying is that Pastor, having sports in your town is a signal to the world that you have investment and you want to invest stores, you attract CEOs, you attract, hold on, let me finish, let me finish, let me finish, let me finish.
Employment, all of that.
Yeah. No, no, listen to me, listen, we have that because we let businesses go, all right?
You want to hear that, you want to hear that, because, because black people don't mean nothing to a lot of people.
That means something to me, no, I'm saying, no, I'm saying that Pastor, what we used to, I've been in Oakland since April eighth of seventy-four, okay, and my point is this, there was a time we had no problem getting organizations and businesses here, I work with Dick's fees, we stole Cirque du Soleil from San Francisco in the dead of night, okay, no, hold on, I'm not done, I'm not done, I'm not done, I'm not done, I'm not done. We, we hired black people in the ghetto, we got jobs here, okay?
There's a black people in the ghetto, and they thought them people gonna vote the other way.
But my point is that we got businesses here, okay, and not only that, we help people start businesses, do you realize at one point in Oakland, we had one hundred and twenty job training nonprofits in Oakland that the redevelopment agency financed? We did, yeah, a hundred and twenty.
How many do we have now?
But you know what, but you know what, you know what, Benny, I bet it's over there right now. I bet it's over there, it's so many, it's so many job training, and, and, it's trying to help people get jobs, but people don't take advantage of it.
No, they're not like they used to be, because they're not funded, we don't have redevelopment to fund them, so you don't, you, I live this, you didn't live how I lived.
Alameda County, they have jobs, they got job training wherever you go.
They don't have, we had a hundred and twenty in Oakland dude, all, all the well-financed, a hundred and twenty.
I was at the Oakland Coliseum yesterday, I was at the Oakland Coliseum yesterday.
Pastor, it's not like it used to be.
You know, you know how many jobs is out here, that people trying to get a job up there?
But, yeah, right, that's, yeah, they're trying to get jobs, but they're not properly trained for them and cited, why? Because we don't have the infrastructure we used to Pastor. No, we don't. Who's paying, look, wait, who's paying people to train for jobs?
Who paying people to get a job, juniors do it all the time.
No, no, who's, no, no, we don't, we don't, no, we don't, no, we don't, don't tell that, don't tell that, don't tell that dude, we don't, we don't. We had, we had, I, I still have the paperwork, we financed as a redevelopment, you know why? We, we don't have redevelopment agency, we, they, we, Jerry killed it, we did nothing to revive it, we financed one, listen to me, no, listen, listen, we financed, get this through your head, we financed one hundred and twenty organizations that did job training in Oakland's only, that was it, okay? It.
I remember Oakland only, I want the Oakland only, I want jobs in Oakland only.
No, 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 no dude, I'm saying we had a hundred and twenty.
We're labor, I'm, I'm, so, I've been labor since nineteen ninety-eight.
You're not listening, man.
Okay, go ahead.
I said we had a hundred and twenty, that's sixty times two job training organizations, all nonprofits the redevelopment agency financed, that means we pay people, okay? We tracked how they did, all right, we don't have that today.
You know what?
We don't.
I can, uh, 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 Barbara Lee, Lauren Taylor, Brenda Grisham, will make sure that Oakland will get triple, quadruple, double of everything that we have.
How? They don't have a plan, everybody talks, you know, I, they don't. Hey, Ben, I, I laid out a plan for the Coliseum. You know, we have to, we have to continue this, cause I have, I have to take care of my.
Yeah, you're right, you have to have a plan, you have to have a plan before you even begin.
Yeah.
Um, and then see it through, which is not happening.
Hey Pastor, Pastor, let's give Brenda the last word, cause I gotta go and take care of my stuff, all right?
Okay, 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 let me get, let me get a word, let me, let me get my last thing.
No, no, I said Brenda, not you.
If I run for city council, I plan on, we gonna have new buildings, I plan on that D6, it gonna look like downtown Oakland, but even better.
Again.
I plan on, no, 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 listen, I plan on, because this should be known as the killing zone.
Yes.
And, you know, where, Seminole is called, that's where I'm going.
All right, uh, Pastor, 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 no, but no, but, but Pastor, you promised Brenda you were a helper, help her now. Tell, let, let her, let her talk, let her have, no, no, Pastor, let her have her ass word, okay? Let her have the last word.
Brenda Grisham is a fighter, and Brenda Grisham will fight for Oakland, and Brenda Grisham will fight for people, uh, Brenda Grisham, Brenda Grisham don't give a doubt who you are, if it, if it, if it ain't pertaining to making Oakland safe, then she is not messing with you.
Awesome, now let her talk about, and take us out, Brenda, talk about, hold on, hold on a second, Brenda, last word about it.
Yes.
Where do we go from here?
Up, you know.
Help you, help you get, help you get running, help you get.
Well, yeah, 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 you know, you kind of spoiled it, cause my son's birthday is coming up, and I was gonna have my official announcement on his birthday, but.
Oh, no, you can see that, you know why, cause.
Oh, yeah, I'm still gonna do it.
It has Pastor Fabian's name on it, not. You call, right, okay? It's too late for that, man.
Too late, man. Yeah, yeah.
Brenda Grisham is a fighter.
Yep.
And I want to say, and it's, and it's why Jerry people do, to attract people who get Brenda Grisham, uh, donate.
I got it, okay, I gotta, I gotta, I gotta close this out, cause I gotta, I gotta check on my mom, Pastor. Pastor. I got you Pastor, I gotta take care of some, so I'm gonna. Oh, you got, okay. Uh, we'll be back everybody, um, don't, Brenda, don't move, don't go anywhere, but thank you so much, Pastor, thank you so much. Folks, I'm in the stream, I'll talk to them backstage, thank you all, tune in.
You will.
Cause that is sixty-two if you haven't done so already.